Welcome everyone to tonight's meeting of the Burlington City Council on today, September 18, 2018. I'm still trying to figure out what day and hour it is after getting back from Korea last night, so please pardon me if I make any mistakes. I'd like to take a moment to ask everyone to please silence all electronic devices. For tonight's invocation, we all call on council member Carol Will.
Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, in these times we ask you, while there are natural disasters, please provide us guidance. Be with the families of low ones who lost their lives as a result of this storm, as they cope with the loss which cannot be compared to any loss of property. Provide strength, courage, and stamina to all the neighboring citizens of the East who may have lost their homes and their valuable personal belongings as they begin the effort, and really the word "effort," of rebuilding their lives. Be with our community leaders as they attempt to provide a vision that will result in our state being greater and safer for generations to come. In your name we trust. Amen.
On that fitting invocation, I'd like to recognize Matt Lawrence to speak about fire station relief donations for Hurricane Florence. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's been a long week as the operating departments have planned for and carried out plans to keep our community safe from the hurricane, and thank goodness we were the lucky ones in the state and didn't have near the damage that we may have anticipated. Others aren't so lucky, so as of this morning, we've, in an outreach to try to help those that are in great need in our state, we've established a donation drop-off for folks to donate food, cleaning supplies, hygiene items that we will get to the folks in need in eastern North Carolina and throughout the state in those areas where there's devastation. We're working with the Department of Emergency Management to find out where these supplies can be taken. So from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at our headquarters fire station at 215 South Church Street across from the police department, we'll be accepting these donations and would encourage all of our community to help, especially those of us who bought hurricane supplies that we may not have used. It's a great opportunity to donate to those who do, so we encourage anybody to participate in this. All right?
Thank you, Deputy Chief.
Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, if I might add on to that, just a good moment to share, so citizens will be proud to hear this. Obviously, we were prepared, and as Deputy Chief Lawrence said, we didn't have a lot of impact here. So our folks have volunteered to go help others across the state, so we have four Burlington firefighters in Newport, North Carolina today. They've been there since Sunday and will stay until next, the end of this week. Our Animal Services has sent two staff members to Lenore County. We'll be working with them on their Animal Services program there. We've got two full patrol teams, police department that have probably made their way by now, they left earlier this afternoon, to Bowling Springs Lake, North Carolina, and they'll be providing police patrols there for the next, I think, maybe two weeks. And we have two telecommunicators in Bladen County helping out the folks in Bladenboro, and they've been down there since Sunday. So it's, we're deployed across the state, and we're happy that we're in such a shape, in good shape, that we can help, and obviously, we've had folks help us in the past, so we're trying to continue that good with.
Excellent. Thank you for sharing that. This time, we recognize our city clerk, Renee Wardell.
Members of council, it's my responsibility to remind you of your duty to avoid conflicts of interest. At this time, I ask if there are any conflicts concerning tonight's agenda.
Done. Before council amends from the August 20, 2018, city council work session and the September 4, 2018, city council meeting, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
Move away from the minutes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes have been approved. Before council is the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
If motion, we approve the agenda.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Agenda has been approved. Next is our consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions, please let us know. Item A, to adopt an ordinance approving the following Traffic Commission recommendations: A request to establish Harvey's Drive as a one-way street in the east-to-west direction between Rahat Street and Avondale Drive. A request to extend the existing no-parking timeframe from along the south side of South Worth Street between West Front Street and West Webb Avenue from 5:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. weekdays to 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on weekdays. Item B, to approve the 2017-2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report to submit to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for approval. Item C, to approve the memorandum of understanding between the City of Burlington and the City of Graham to provide Graham with a remote location providing secondary backup as well as disaster recovery solutions. Item D, to approve the reclassification of a sanitation equipment operator level two, sorry, operator two position, level 16, to a sanitation operator level three, position level 18, effective upon council approval. Item E, to approve two municipal agreements with the North Carolina Department of Transportation with betterments for intersection improvements at North Church Street and Graham-Hopedale Road, as well as South Church Street and St. Mark's Church Road. Item F, to approve a banking resolution authorizing an investment account with Pinnacle Bank and to authorize the city clerk to attest the resolution to authorize the city manager, director of finance and risk management, and the accounting treasury manager to sign us on the account. Item G, to approve an amendment of the Front Street Greenway and Bike Way Capital Project Ordinance and approve budget amendment 2019-13 to use funds donated by Impact Aliments to establish a trail from Andrews Elementary to the Haw River Trail, known as the Ruby Lane Trailhead. Item H, to approve budget amendment 2019-14 to allow Recreation Department to use grant funds received from Impact Aliments to purchase playground equipment for North Park. Do I hear a motion to approve this consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? The consent agenda items have been approved. We have one item of unfinished business this evening. Item one, city council will consider an application to rezone from R-15 residential district to CR conditional residential district for the use of a 241-lot single-family subdivision. The property is located at 1722 Shamrock Drive, currently Shamrock Golf Course, referenced as Aliments County tax identification number 130754. This is on the field. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nuss.
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. The public hearing for this matter was held on June 19, 2018, and closed by the city council. At the request of the respective attorneys, city council voted to continue its action on the rezoning request to July 17, 2018, to allow for further negotiation efforts between the parties. At its July 17, 2018, meeting, the city council voted to continue its vote on the rezoning request to its September 4, 2018, meeting, again at the joint request of the parties' respective attorneys. At its September 4, 2018, meeting, the vote was continued to the September 18, 2018, city council meeting, and now I'll turn it back over to the mayor.
Thank you. This time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Lawson Brown.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Are there any restrictions on time this evening for this?
Not technically. Would you appreciate if you keep your comment?
I've been talking with Mr. Longest, trying to do 10 minutes or less and then do five minutes of rebuttal if Mr. Longest speaks in opposition, as I anticipate that he will. First and foremost, I want to thank the council and mayor for y'all listening to this and putting as much attention as you have to it. I want to make sure that as a part of the record are all the weekly or monthly reports that we have sent in on the course of negotiation that occurred between myself and Mr. Moffett of our firm and Mr. Longest on behalf of the neighbors. Mr. Mylum and his group have been negotiating in good faith since April of this year when two requests were made. Those requests were buffering and a lot size, and we have compromised on the, both of those, and have only gotten 16 more requests and then six more requests. I want to remind the council that the neighbors, under the Neighborhood Association and under the golf alliance, had an opportunity to purchase this property under a right of first refusal with the Walker family, which John Harris signed as president of both of those organizations, and they waived those rights, enabling the present owner to purchase the property. Third, I think it's important to note that the UDO model that you are going through right now will substantially reduce the classifications of residential property, R-15, R-12, R-9, et cetera. So what you have as the last item on your agenda tonight, I believe, is consistent with the design of the project that we have before us. Bob Desinger and Lee Bryant are here to answer any questions on the engineering side if you should have any that I cannot answer. I want to start out by saying that we would like to amend our request to 219 lots. We would like to take out of the request completely the R-15 lots that are already zoned R-15 on the west Shamrock Drive located on the west side. There are already R-15. Our plan was to leave them R-15, so we would like to delete those lots. Doing that will reduce the request on the hundred or so acres to 219 lots. I will go through these conditions very briefly and quickly, if you will. Minimum lot size will be 7,000 square feet. The average size of these lots is going to be 9,300 feet. Second, the minimum lot size will be 60 feet unless otherwise specified herein, and there are a number of specifications. Three, the minimum lot size of the 49 perimeter lots backing up the Shamrock Drive and properties on Monroe-Holt Road will be 80 feet. The average size of those lots is 11,200. So you can see that we're providing buffering within the outer perimeters of this particular request. The setbacks will be, as we specified earlier, 25 feet front, 10-foot side, 25 rear. The five existing developer lots on the south side of Shamrock Drive will remain with their same dimensions, and we're withdrawing those from the request so that they will be just like they have always been. Eighth, the homes constructed on perimeter lots facing Shamrock Drive will have a minimum of 1,900 square feet of house built on them. That was per the request of the neighbors. That was a compromise amount, and let me emphasize that Mr. Mylum and his group have compromised on every item that has been presented to them over the last six months. The developer, next, the developer will construct a berm and landscape buffer along the rear of the lots backing up the Shamrock Drive around the northeast corner of Shamrock Drive. The berm shall be four feet high in height and include landscape buffering consisting of holly shrubs planted their own. Developers HOA shall be responsible for maintenance of the berm and landscaping. Number 10, the developer will construct a six-foot-tall opaque fence along and inside of the southernmost property line of property, butting the homes on Monroe-Holt Road. So the homes on Monroe-Holt Road had requested a fence, and Mr. Mylum is going to include that as a condition, and the HOA will be responsible for that. Interestingly enough, in the last two weeks, we have received requests not for the six-foot fence that they asked for earlier, but for a 10-foot brick wall. So you can see that that is one item that is just indicative of the difficulty we've had in trying to negotiate this matter. Built-upon areas, the impervious surface will conform to density calculations set forth on the plan of the National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Phase II Stormwater Standards in order to maintain the development's designation as a low-density development as defined. Originally, 24% of this property was going to be impervious surface. Standing before you today, it's 18%. So it is a very low-density development by those low-density standards set by the city. Twelve, the developer will relocate the southernmost CBU male kiosk from its initially proposed position on Shamrock Drive to a location to the interior of the development, which location will be subject to the staff approval. That will depend on the exact design, but Mr. Beaker in particular had indicated that he found that offensive right across from his home, and so we have moved that, and the City of Burlington has design criteria on that and will comply with those design criteria. Speaking of Mr. Beaker's particular objection, not to single him out, but he did express some concern about the traffic that would be on the road. We looked very diligently at the roundabout that would be located on the southwestern corner of where Parkway Drive comes in. The roundabout would have actually routed every car by Mr. Beaker's house, or most of them, so we felt like, as did the City of Burlington's staff, as did our traffic engineer, as did our engineers, general engineers, that the design we have presented is appropriate. And you've all studied it, so I will not belabor that point. As to the road going across the dam, that is a private easement, if you will. It's been treated that way. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has never taken over maintenance of that particular road. So there will be cul-de-sacs on either end of Shamrock Drive, both east and west, and there will be no curbing. There will just be the ability of the neighbors and anybody else who thinks that they have the right to go across there with a vehicle or in a pedestrian fashion to cross that as they will, so that will, there will be no bollards there, and the, it will not be, the road will not be improved to DOT standards, but it will be left as it has been for the last 60 years, which is one of the critical things that we have been working with staff the last six weeks on, trying to get that clarified. The neighbors, in their last request, asked that the name Shamrock not be used by Mr. Mylum's group. He has agreed he will not use the name Shamrock. Notwithstanding that, the neighbors have asked that he repair the lettering paint and masonry and disrepair on the existing Shamrock signs, and he has agreed to that, subject to the sign remaining as a part of any DOT mandated requirements. All of these revised plans will be incorporated into the plan and resubmitted for technical review committee review and approval. So what you have been presented with, and what I've asked to be made a part of the record, is those items that we have previously submitted. In summary, the developer has created larger lots to buffer the existing lots that are out there. The staff negotiated hard early on in this for the developer to run water and sewer to certain points that would be accessible to the neighbors, and that is something that Mr. Mylum has agreed to, and he's always been a part of his plan. The neighbors had requested that he run it on Shamrock Drive and attach, or excuse me, fix water and sewer to all of their properties, and that we work with the City of Burlington to get the waiver of annexation, and that he pay the fees, et cetera, et cetera. He has agreed to do what he originally agreed to do, to allow that connection to be close by, but the cost of running water and sewer on both of Shamrock Drives would be prohibitive and would not be consistent with what he is in a position to do. Again, 18% impervious surface. Unfortunately, yesterday, for the first time after negotiating with Mr. Longest, who found out yesterday as well, another attorney has entered the picture, and I had a 15, 30-minute conversation with him yesterday, and his question to me was, "Have y'all worked it all out?" And I said, "Well, I don't think so. Let me get Mr. Longest on the phone." So we had a conversation with Mr. Longest and confirmed that all of the neighbors' points of contention, the sum 24, that they requested after having only two, and then only 16, and then 18, that we have not worked all of those out. We were tasked by you, and we diligently pursued negotiation with whom we thought was the authorized representative, not recognizing that the neighbors had some four to six weeks ago hired other council that was not even in privy or conversation with us at all. So to say that the neighbors had negotiated in good faith would be making a gross misstatement. If they had a lawyer that was negotiating with us, and then they've got somebody that's now filed a lawsuit about the easement rights that they contend, that some of the neighbors contend they have, then I would submit to you they're not in good faith at all. Mr. Longest and I, I thought, had great dialogue and were trying to move this ball along. I think the council can send a message tonight that this is the type development that you want to see, that the citizens of Burlington will be proud of going forward, and it will send a message to the citizens and to the development community that Burlington is a place developers want to do business and it's a place that citizens want to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. This time, we recognize Mr. Frank Longest.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, to be candid with you, I did not expect to speak tonight. I thought the public hearing was over with, and it was just a matter for y'all to consider your vote. But since you've allowed me to speak, let me raise a few points, not too picky, certain things Mr. Brown said, but would try to let you know that with regard to our firm's representation, our clients have been basically, from the very beginning, the number of homeowners out there who signed the original petition, which petition was filed with you before we ever came into the picture. But I believe those homeowners are basically 40-some, and they are listed on that petition with their Shamrock addresses or Monroe-Holt addresses, and those are the people we've been representing. During this time period, we have gone back and forth, as I tried to submit to you late today, and I apologize for that, but I've never had a backspasm before, but I had one today, and it's not pleasant, and I'm late here in the night because I had to go find a muscle relaxant, and that's not easy to find, but thank goodness I had a good friend who's a chiropractor, and then I found another good friend who was even better. He could allow me to do a drug, an orthopedic surgeon, and so I just now got a pain relief a few minutes ago, a muscle relaxant. So if it affects my speech or my thought process, please forgive me. I have certainly not had any type of alcohol or spirits at five o'clock, although my body says it would like to have that if that would relieve the pain. But going back to the representation, I'll be blunt. I don't know who has filed a lawsuit or when it's been filed. Mr. Brown and I both talked to attorney Bice yesterday in Raleigh, who called my firm and me around 12:15 yesterday, and wanted to know the status of our negotiations between Mr. Brown and I. And I told him I had just sent another document to Mr. Brown's office that morning, and the reply for one of the key issues was no, so I guess we didn't have any close closure of the matter. And he said, "Well, he was thinking about filing a lawsuit," and a declaratory matter as an action, and he didn't convey to me who the people are. So to this day, I still don't know who the people are on the left side of the V. They may be some of my clients or not, but again, our firm has not been involved in that, has not participated in that, and I certainly hope Mr. Brown understands I have not tried to threaten him or his client in any way, shape, or form with any type of litigation. The truth of the matter is, if you remember, back in June, when you had the public hearing, lasted till about 12 o'clock from my memory, the council had a motion to not approve this particular request, and Mr. Owen, as a council member, suggested that we, the two attorneys, try to get together to see if there was some meeting in mind and come to a resolution. From that point, to be blunt with you, 40 people to get together, when they all have a little bit of difference as to how their property is affected by this large project, is not an easy task. But we got all that together. The spreadsheet was multiple pages. I think it had like 15 particular, specific items that were requested, like Mr. Brown said. Some of those, I would categorize those as somewhat minor, but they were important to those particular property owners that were affected, and that's why they made the request. For example, the request originally was for an eight-foot opaque fence behind the properties on Monroe-Holt Road. Mr. Mylum came back and said he'd put up a six-foot fence, and we went back to our clients, and he says, "Gee, you know, second thought, it should be a brick wall." And so that's where Mr. Brown's coming from, and obviously, I could say there's a moving target, but it somewhat moves when you ask something and you get a stone-faced "no," it's going to be this or not. So we're pleased that he has agreed to put up a six-foot opaque fence and have it taken care of by the HOA, but that's not what we originally requested. We wanted something that was a true screening barrier for those homes that face Monroe-Holt Road. Two of the big items that have been at issue, and then there's a third one, has been, number one, the request by the perimeter homeowners of R-15 housing that the existing private road stretch across the dam be maintained, and that they would have access to that, and that that would be conveyed to an HOA, so Mr. Mylum wouldn't have, or his LLC liability could pass that on, and that that particular private road section would be paid for in the future as to its maintenance by his HOA and the people. And we offered to even say, you know, if you come up with a plan that's reasonable and fair, our people will probably chip into that maintenance project, but we haven't got that closed. To be further surprised, today I found out from Mr. Brown that they had withdrawn their objection to the private road, and as Mr. Brown announced a few minutes ago, they're agreeable to that now, whereas all along, they've told us it was no way, shape, or form and be a cold day in you-know-where before that would be done. So that's a surprise, but a good surprise. The second big issue that's been a real problem with our clients has been, they feel like that having at the initial 244 townhomes and the increased traffic and the high density of where those are located, if you remember from the public hearing, those are all pretty much located at the western portion of the golf course property, very near the highway, and that that density caused issues with regard to traffic, and we had an MAI praiser to testify before you that, in her opinion, the loss of the golf course and the high density of this particular project would create adverse property values to these people. So in that light, we had asked that they be compensated for that. Let me go back in just a second. Back on July 31, it's my memory, that we transmitted the correspondence after the 40-some people had their input into what they wanted in this project, and we gave the multi-page spreadsheet of at least 14 items plus some others that we suggested. The developer had an option, if he would like to reduce his project down to 157 units, we'd go away. If not, here are the 14 items plus that we would like to discuss and have concessions on his part. Now, with that said, going back, and let me retract, the big item that we were trying to get for compensation for the homeowners, for their, I'm going to put, being put upon by this project... by this project, and not the project meeting the compatibility standard for the comprehensive plan as it is today, and as it was before the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they voted six to one not to approve the project, that the matter of having the developer put in water and sewer lines in the streets to face the perimeter houses that exist there so that those perimeter houses could have easy access to water and sewer in the future at no cost to them, except originally, we'd asked for the tap-on fees, et cetera, et cetera. We were a little bit overreached. And Mr. Mylan said he wasn't going to do that, so we backed up and said, we'll just put the water and sewer lines in and we'll pay for the taps at the time under the regular city plan that'd be applicable at that point in time. And as of today, we still get no on that. I think Mr. Brown's quote last evening, they didn't want to spend $3 million. It was the cost of that, and I don't know if that's true as to the exact cost or if that's Mr. Brown's reach or not. But that's their basis of not going along with that request. That is the major request and stumbling block that's still outstanding, was for the developer to put in water and sewer lines in the streets so that our existing R-15 perimeter houses could have a connection to water and sewer surfaces in the future at no cost to that installation to them, except for tap-on fees and the regular plumber fees to get connected, et cetera. The third item that became a little bit contentious was that, and I think I'm correcting this, Mr. Mylan at one time had told us, and I think he may have said it tonight of the public hearing, that the fifteen, R-15 housing on the perimeter could have access to the golf course amenities and he would have no objection to that. Well, just as soon as we sent that in on the July 31 list, the response we got at the end of August, it was a month hiatus, but we didn't get any response. When we got the response back, the wording was, yeah, I'll do that if you waive your rights to the easement to cross the dam and to waive any other legal rights that you have that's been announced or declared. Well, I don't fault him for wanting to try to grab that, but our clients, or at least at that time they told me, that was not fair in their mind. They felt like, again, a gun was pointing to their head to get something they were already promised and it was being removed back. So that is still the third issue, as I understand it, that needs to be clarified. The other issues, obviously, we don't all agree on, but in candor with you, I think Mr. Brown and Mr. Moffett have worked diligently and hard on those fourteen-plus items on the spreadsheet. And a lot of those aren't the same as we asked for, but there has been some movement and compromise, and Mr. Brown read the list of conditions he wants changed. Except for a few items, I think that's been very, very favorable to existing R-15 homeowners. But that's still not the same as what they're going to be facing with a high-density plan that's going to adversely affect them and change their lifestyle with regard to the surrounding area. And please forgive me, I don't want to go through and rehash everything because you've already had a public hearing, but you gave me the opportunity to speak. And like law, a lot of lawyers like a minister, if you give us the microphone, we're going to take advantage. So the issue basically is twofold, as I see it. The matter of water and sewer lines has not been met. I still think that's a reasonable demand and compensation to our clients of what they're going to endure in the future with this high-density project. Remember, the developer has elected not to reduce the size of it. He's reduced a few of these, as he's mentioned, but that's kind of like a magic hat, by taking some lots that are over here at R-15, and he's buying those, he's saying, I'm taking those out of the plan. You know, he hasn't lost anything or gained anything, he just takes the number down, which is beneficial to the 24% being reduced to 18%. But the real key is the issue, I think, of having access and use of the golf course amenities that he had promised. And I didn't hear anything tonight about that being put back on the table as a condition, so I'm assuming that's been withdrawn and that offer has been removed. The third thing I would like to point out to you, there was progress, it's a surprise to me, that the private roadway across the dam is now not objectionable. That's great. I think that's beneficial to the people who live out there. I think it's beneficial that the legal issue of their access there, too, I believe, is somewhat moot now, since they can have the access across the roadway. And it was clear from the plan as originally submitted and the developer's strong stance, he wasn't going to do it until today. But that issue is off the table, and I think that's a big take and a beneficial, I'd say, to the people who live out there. So that's my report. I think it's not been an easy situation. I think both sides have their heels dug in on certain points, and, you know, if we had a mediator or something like that, maybe we could have gotten a little farther and a little better. But let me finalize by saying, I don't fault Mr. Brown or his client if he feels like somebody has taken a hammer and raised it above his head to negotiate with a threat of lawsuit. We're not parties to that, have not been a party to that, didn't know a lawsuit was going to be filed until yesterday. And Mr. Huffman was kind enough to let us know that he felt like that we should get together one more time and see what we could do. And we did obviously exchange communications today that I believe is helpful regard to the private road. I'd be available for any questions, if any of you have those. I mean, I could be up here all night nitpicking all the different items that we don't agree to. But I hope you understand that there's been substantial movement. At the same time, the real issue is, is that the development with 200-and-some houses, not 244 now, but still a high-density, high concentration, compatible with this existing neighborhood? I don't believe it is. It wasn't in June, don't think it is today. So that is the final thought I have, is that you, as a public body, have to make a decision with regard to the law, as it's applicable at this point in time. Your guidance from the P and Z has been that the developer, even with these changes, has not presented a plan that substantially mediated or changed from that originally submitted, and it did not meet and does not meet the criteria of compatibility with the city's own comprehensive plan. Now, if you change the plan in the future, that's your right, that's your prerogative. But you've got to look at it, what you've got today. And that's what I think is the point that we're trying to make to you in your deliberations, is that you have to do your duty with regard to the comprehensive plan as it exists today and make your decision on that basis, does that plan, even with the conditions and the changes, meet that criteria? So I thank you for the opportunity to speak before you, and I also apologize for the length of my remarks. And if I haven't made sense, I apologize, I blame it on drugs.
Thank you, Mr. Longest. We appreciate you making it out to the meeting this evening. And I invite Mr. Lawson Brown back up for just a few more minutes.
Frank, you can lay down on the floor. That desk up sometime, I promise.
Got your scotch?
Just wanted to make a couple of points. Mr. Longest indicated 244, 224 townhouses. These are not townhouses. These are single-family houses, and they have the standard ten-foot side setback, so the houses will be 20 feet apart, lest you get the notion that we're talking about townhouses. Negotiation going back and forth. What I received from Mr. Longest this afternoon is that the existing residents' water and sewer taps should be brought directly to each existing property at no charge. Furthermore, residents would be allowed to tap into these systems without city annexation and at city rates. We can't control that. I told you earlier that we worked for six weeks trying to work on the damn road. The city staff really was trying to protect the folks, but the staff has agreed it can remain private, so we had very little control over that. As to the use of the amenities that will be built out there, this is our response within the last few weeks. Henson Realty has first acknowledged that it would be most reasonable to expect and to allow the neighbors leisurely use of the sidewalks, common areas, and spaces and amenities under peaceful neighborly circumstances. Under such circumstances, it is highly unlikely, save for incidences of abuse, that Henson Realty would seek to enforce such use of private common areas by outside parties, that we would anyway try to restrict that. But we didn't want to offer it as a condition that was before the city council, but we're clearly, Mr. Mylan is clearly willing, with these, now the litigation filed, but with ongoing threats of litigation, it was reasonable for him to say, if you want to use it, then we don't want you to be suing us because you've got some sort of easement rights. But he is totally agreeable. The sidewalks are going to be public. I can't imagine walking that neighborhood and then the three miles of paths that we have, that anybody on Mr. Mylan's behalf is going to say, no, you can't stay here. Anecdotally, one house was sold that Shamrock lasted 45 days and it sold at full price. I don't know what that tells us, other than that's market data, that the suspicion or cloud that may be associated with that would be detrimental to property values. Again, we've beat this dead horse, so thank you very much and look forward to hearing your favorable decision. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do I hear any further questions from council, or do I hear a motion?
I've got just a question of my notes, and it wasn't discussed today. I think it may be a D or T issue, but Ms. Nelson, is the, are there going to be 49 requirements? Is that, are improvements, is that at the intersection?
You're asking there are going to be any improvements required at the highway 49? Yes, there are, as identified in the I, and the developer, that's part of their plans, so they would do that.
Okay. I just want to be sure that's in there. And just for point of clarity, my previous notes show that there's three and a half miles of sidewalks and trails. Did that change as you guys, it's stayed the same? The impervious is reduced? The sidewalks and trails are the same? One question that I'm somewhat confused with here is, the dam, it remained, it's public now, is that where we are? And then, what's the HOA's response, exactly what does that mean?
Mr. Owen, that road was dedicated to the public, but it was never accepted by a municipal or county authority. So it, the North Carolina Department of Transportation has treated that as a private road. And as you recall from going out there, state maintenance ends at each end of it, so it has been a private road across the dam, I assume, for the whole 60 years that it's been there. But ever since I've been in town, 43 years, it's been a private road in essentially the condition that it was in today.
And what I hear tonight is, that's the way it would remain?
That is correct. The issue was not, the issue with leaving it private or public was not with the neighbors, it was more with the city staff and with the improvements that would be required, and what the staff was doing their job, the requirements that would mandate that it be 28 feet wide, and et cetera, et cetera. So that was the sticking issue more than anything else.
The other question is, is the water and sewer, and we've got to have maybe a better map somewhere. What has the developer, what have, as I understood, I thought at the last public hearing, there was comments made that water lines would be, could be linked on to by people who wish, who would ever wish to become involved with the city, whether it's a, as it stands now, they have to be annexation. But tell me exactly where this plan will take those lines that at some point in time might be accessible to the existing neighbors of that property.
Mr. Owen, just pulling that up.
I'm going to defer to Bob Dishinger of Evans Engineering. If, Bob, you can clarify that as to where those access points will be, or perhaps.
Feel free to use the mouse here if you want to point, you can point with the mouse pointer if you want.
Yeah, so I can do that. And maybe if we could just go back to the full screenshot. Okay.
Hold that up a little bit. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bob Dishinger. I'm president of Evans Engineering with offices located 4609 Dundas Drive in Greensboro. I'll take the water first, it might be the easier thing to do. We have an existing water line out here in Highway 49, so we'll make a connection out here with the water out here at Highway 49. It'll come in here, and then it'll continue all the way down Shamrock Drive, we'll call it west, all the way to the end of this last lot, right here. So it'll extend the entire length of the road here. It will then come through and make its way through the neighborhood, and then it'll come back out on Shamrock Drive East in this location here. And then we'll extend down Shamrock Drive all the way to this point. So in summary, the water line be completely in Shamrock through that length, and from here, it'll be from this street connection here down to this street connection here. The sewer...
So basically, Shamrock West, you're basically taking it from the entrance of 49 all the way down near the road we're talking about at the dam?
Yes, sir.
And on the east side, you're taking it about two-thirds of the way down with the Shamrock Road East, basically?
That's correct.
And then it would not be over on Monroe Holt Road, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Or, okay.
Now, in terms of the sanitary sewer, of course, everything being gravity-fed and leaving the property down here at the north end, at the lake, will extend the line up in this general area here, so it could be connected on to by these lots in this area here. As part of the development, it'll bring the line up basically paralleling the lake and the creek. It will come up into this area here to serve this area of the site. Then it gets extended out into Shamrock Drive, and of course, comes across the fringe of the five lots out here on Shamrock Drive. It's also extended to Shamrock Drive West in this location right here, which again is another low point, so gravity line could come from, come down Shamrock Drive and tie into it at that point. So it'd have a connection there for any kind of future extension. Similarly, for Shamrock on the east side, we'll be connecting in down here, so it'll come up into the site in here, and then it'll be stubbed out in this area, again, generally in a low... in a low point, where any lots over here on this side could tie into it. It'll also extend up into the site, again, be brought up at this street connection here, which again is another low point, is basically a high point here, so any lots in, on the either side right here could tie into that connection. And then, thirdly, the last low point in Shamrock East, we would bring the line through the site and bring it up to Shamrock Drive at this location, so again, from the high point here could drain back to it, and any of these lots here could drain back to it. In terms of lots on Monroe Holt, the high point is basically the property line, is there's basically a ridge right here, so any of those lots drain south and away from the site, so they could not be served by gravity sewer.
So, if, what you're seeing there, obviously Monroe Holt Road lots, it's going to be very difficult for them to tap on to the existing sewer, and I'm not trying to be an engineer here, but no one will look at you and Todd here for a minute. That would be very difficult, or is that even practical at some point in time, if people out there needed sewer, or desired to have sewer?
So, it depends obviously on where you are, in terms of where the sewer lines extend to the Shamrock Drive. So, if you're across the street from it, that's going to make it a lot more easier to make that connection. But obviously, as you get away from where they connect to Shamrock, there's going to be some expense involved to do that.
Extend the lines?
Yes, sir.
Right. So, Monroe Holt area will certainly be some expense involved in that, I would think.
I would think so.
Now, one more question, if I could, Mr. Lam. Mr. Patterson, who wants this one now, is, as I understand the city policy now, in terms of provision of water and sewer, to someone outside the city, that the part of that process is that those people would then request a voluntary annexation? Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Owen. In our ordinance, section 3730, covers that process, for any property that, outside the corporate limits, that requests water or sewer service, they would also have to request annexation at that time.
Okay. Now, if such request was to be made, I just heard, someone said that'll work, and someone said I don't want to be annexed, so, that's not uncommon. I think it'd be important for the citizens here to understand that it would be very difficult to just annex one lot at a time here, in reference to the delivery of this utility, or the cost of delivery of this utility. Is that not correct?
Yes. Again, as Mr. Kirkman indicated, it would depend on where the lot is located, with respect to existing utilities. So that if utilities were extended, and lots were adjacent to that property, they could easily be served. But if there was no utility there, then you'd have to go through the extension of the lines in order to get service. But also, when the annexation petition is filed, then that would require a council decision, subsequently, whether to annex that property at that time of service, or to hold off on that and annex several at one time, I believe.
Wouldn't you want to go past houses that were not in the city?
Yeah, I'm not sure if people understand what you just said.
Can't hear it.
We don't hear it.
Can't hear it.
We don't hear it.
Yeah. You know, we may get a little mixed up here, in terms of saying where we've got, where there's, there are certain areas that the, that these lines run, that would seem to be easily accessible by one of the residents, but they're not in the city. So, by statute right now, they would have to agree to be annexed. The other question then the council would have to be involved with is, is are we doing basically spot annexation, and just annexing a few people, instead of the entire neighborhood? At what point in time, I think we need to say this right now, so people can understand that, then if there's, would require, say for example, the extension of the lines, that obviously would, along the east Shamrock and west Shamrock, the cost of that would go to whom? To extend those lines?
If it's outside the city, the city would not pay that cost. It would be up to whoever is requesting service to provide that, the design and the construction of those lines.
Okay. Now, I'm not trying to get too much in the weeds here, but what happens if there are differences between some of the residents who live along that road, in terms of people saying, my septu eighty spine, I don't want to be part of the city, I don't want to be, I don't want to have anything to do with that line being extended, I don't want to do that. Now, that's going to make it almost impossible, really not, in public safety, for the city to annex one house here, not that house, two houses here, and not that house. Is that not correct?
Yeah, it becomes quite confusing.
I don't think your council would approve of that, that's the point you're making.
That's right.
For the practical matter, you really, the city couldn't do that.
That's right.
And that's the point you're making.
That's right. I just want to make sure people understand that. But furthermore, those that could, if there was a comprehensive area that said, we want to come into the city, we'd like to have all the city services that's provided, without this project, it wouldn't even be where it's at. We're back to zero at 49. That's right. That's right. And then the cost of getting it in may not, may not make sense from a city standpoint. We'd have to take a look at that comprehensively, as we have in the past, when certain areas have asked us to run water and sewer to them. Right.
Can you also confirm, there's water and sewer are two different items on this, and there's two different costs of the lines? So, for a water line, for about 75% of the lots, the water line is already in front of the lot. And so, the engineering and maintenance is just the residential tap directly to that main, which is, in every resident in the city of Burlington is responsible for that tap, from their house to the main.
That's correct. If the water line were there, then there would just be the standard tap fee, and whatever cost they had for a plumber to connect from the meter to their house.
Those lots end up in a great situation, just like every resident in the city, and everyone adjacent to a water line, outside of our city limits, and they've got a very minimal cost overall, compared to water and sewer lines, to tap into the water line. Now, as Mr. Owen mentioned, the sewer lines do require some extension to get in front of some of these lots, and that's where some additional costs could come in, but you do have a fair number of the lots that are adjacent to a gravity line already. And so, again, they'd be responsible for that, from their parts, the private property connection to the main, again, just like every other property in the city of Burlington.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council?
Do I hear a motion from council regarding this item?
Yes, I'll make a motion, that we approve this request. I believe it's consistent with the comprehensive plan, and I think what I would also just say on the side is, it appears to me that there's been an awful lot of people working together here. No one got everything they wanted, but certainly, both parties, especially our two local attorneys. It's great to see two local attorneys sitting here, working together, to try to do what's best for all parties involved. My motion would be to approve the request, as it, I think it's consistent with the cop plan going forward.
Question, that with the conditions offered up this evening?
Yes, sir.
As of this evening?
Yes, sir, those conditions.
You know, because it's been, the reason I ask that, because there's some that's been added since the close of the public hearing. I just want to make sure that's clear, but.
And I would ask the clerk if she's clear, always clear, on all the conditions. And subject to TRC approval on everything?
That's all the conditions.
Yes, that's right.
An effort at clarity, the sheet I have with the email, Mr. Lawson, 428, from Ryan Moffett, that indicates 224 lots, and I think in your remarks, you mentioned 219 lots.
That's right. We removed the five R-15 lots from the request, because they will remain R-15.
219 is the?
219 is the number.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do I hear a second motion?
Well, yes, I'll second the motion. I think as we move forward, certainly with our UDO conversations, this is a hybrid plan, this is a unique plan, it's an open space residential development plan, which I think is going to become more and more popular, and more and more demanded by the public as we move forward. But the UDO, if it was sitting here today, would have R-9, R-12, and R-15 in medium density. This is a hybrid, it's got medium density to it, it would certainly fit the UDO if it was adopted today, and it's not, and draft proposal, but it's got some high-density elements too. But I am convinced that the conditions, in addition to that, make this a very viable plan, and yes, I would second that.
Thank you for those comments. Do I hear any discussion from council?
I'd just like to say to people that my thinking on this has evolved enormously over the last couple of months, and I'm really glad that I had the opportunity to watch the community try to work together on this, and I know how tough this has been. It's been probably the hardest rezoning that, in my nine years on the council so far. But when I think about this, I'm trying to take the long view, and one of the things in our consistency statement is that it's reasonable and in the public interest. And I know how our, our community is changing, and it is very hard. I've been here for 44 years, and I hate the fact that I can't get out of my driveway sometimes, because of the traffic. And there's so much development pressure that's happening, because of what's happening all across North Carolina. We're living on this corridor of 8540, and people want to be here, and we're seeing it happen all across North Carolina. And as hard as that change is, I think that this is a plan that can work well. I've gone to all kinds of communities, part of Burlington, where single-family typically was there, and a higher density would move next door, and it is, it looks great. And so, I've, I've felt, over time, my feeling has changed about this. The concessions that have been made, I think, has come up with good solutions to the kinds of things that the community wanted, and so I'm going to support this as well.
Would you hear any other council discussion?
I would like to mention, this has been an opportunity to reach out to mayors and council members across the state, who are dealing with similar redevelopment cases in front of their communities. It's a challenging time for golf courses, and councils all across our state are dealing with the question, do you allow for them to be redeveloped? And I appreciate the guidance that I've received from those council members. This is a challenging development, but like Councilmember Owen, Councilmember Hikes, and Councilmember Butler, I appreciate residents coming together. In any case, where we tackle changes in our community, it's, it's good to have people at the table, and to try to find as much compromise as possible. Any further council questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed with five votes.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda, we have a number of public hearings. We do have a few more items on the agenda. I do ask for anyone has conversations they want to have, to please step out into the All right, item two on our public hearings list, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting a resolution to approve the BSafe storage property on University Drive. Contiguous voluntary annexation of valid petition has been received. At this time, we recognize Assistant Director of Planning and Community Development, David B. Elrich.
Thank you, Mayor, council. This is a voluntary contiguous annexation request. A valid petition for annexation has been received, it has been certified by the city clerk. For the BSafe storage facility, it would bring in approximately 3.055 acres into the city. Notice of the public hearing has been properly advertised, September 6th. Again, this is a voluntary request, and it's also part of a conditional development condition, that requires the property to be annexed into the city prior to receiving building permits. It looks like they're about ready to begin that construction, and they have requested annexation. This is a public hearing, and I believe Mr. Ken Chavis is present from the company, and staff will try and answer any questions you may have about the annexation.
Welcome, Mr. Chavis.
I'm Al Leonard. Mr. Chavis couldn't make it this evening.
Welcome, Mr. Leonard.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm Al Leonard, I'm president of BSafe Storage and Wine Cellars. I can relate to the mayor, I got in from Germany and Croatia late last night, so I'm dragging a little bit. But I'm basically here just answering questions. I've got some photos of some existing facilities, if you'd like to see them. We've been in front of the board before, been rezoned, the grading permit's been issued, we're about 90% done with that, the building permit's ready to be picked up. Appreciate all staff's help throughout the process, so, again, I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, and be available for questions.
Any questions from council, prior to starting the public hearing? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, if anyone on this side of the room would like to speak. Anyone on this side of the room? You could state your name and address for the public record.
My name's Kayden Jones, and I live on North Main Street. I've lived in Burlington for three years now, and I'm 33 years old, young guy. The real estate market in Burlington is, is pretty tempting to get into, as a young person. A lot of old homes that are for sale for very cheap, that can be fixed up, and that's currently what me and my wife are doing. We live right on, oh, I didn't state the address, sorry, 1005 North Main Street, Burlington.
Kayden, I did want to clarify, is your, are your comments related to the BSafe storage?
Oh, no, I'm so sorry. Yeah, should I wait for another time?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good.
Awesome.
I'll be back.
Anyone else on this side of the room who would like to speak? All right, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear any questions or a motion?
I'd like a motion that we adopt a resolution to approve the annexation effective at 11:59 on September 8th, 2015.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion or discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed.
I love your name.
Thank you very much for coming. Thank you very much for coming.
Well, hopefully it will be open in about 10 to 12 months, and we'll invite everybody to the public hearing.
Excellent. Hopefully not too much of your grading got washed away in the last week. Item three on our agenda, a public hearing has been set to consider adopting a resolution to approve the Twin Lakes Maintenance Facility property on South Church Street. Contiguous voluntary annexation. A valid petition has been received. At this time, we recognize Consistent Director of Planning, David Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Again, this is a voluntary contiguous annexation request. A valid petition has been received. It was certified by the clerk. This would bring in approximately 12 and a half acres into the city limits. Notice of public hearing has been properly advertised September 6th. Again, voluntary request. It is a public hearing. It is going to precede a development of a maintenance facility on the site. I believe Mr. Renee Welburn is here from the company, and staff will try and answer any questions you may have.
If you'd like to speak again.
Twin Lakes Maintenance has spent 34 years trying to get something besides an old house, and I think it's approved. We look forward to being a part of the town, and we, if you've got any questions for me, I'll take them.
Any questions from council?
No, I just hope you'll maintain the beauty of that area like the Twin Lakes property.
Our landscaping is above and beyond, I feel like, so...
All right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak, anyone on this side of the room?
I'd like to motion that we close the public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this request?
I move that we adopt a resolution to approve the annexation effective at 11:59 p.m. on September 18, 2018.
Second.
Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Thank you very much for coming tonight. We look forward to the development, and we appreciate everything Twin Lakes does for our community. Item four, public hearing has been set to consider amending the City of Burlington zoning text, Sections 33-5 subdivision regulation as it pertains to greenways and bikeways, as well as fee in lieu. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This is a city request for a text amendment. At the Planning and Zoning Commission, no one spoke in opposition. The commission is recommending approval of this text amendment by request, a vote of four to three. They expressed concerns about the city keeping the money for a long period of time and the money being used for something other than its intended purpose or location. And Mike Nunn will speak to this request.
Welcome, Mr. Nunn.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I would like to go through just a few slides quickly to explain it and be clear and allow you to answer some questions. We are discussing the fee in lieu. This actually originated, it's been discussed internally a little bit several years, but it's really come into a head lately about building improvements from private standpoint to where, in the short term, in this situation, five years, there's an adopted project that's going to come right back through and remove, replace, realign that that was invested by the private development. So we talked about it, and talked about it, and finally we just sort of put in some things on paper. Planning, engineering, legal, and finance got together and discussed the best way to approach this. Of course, we looked at several other communities. It's statewide. We didn't try to recreate the wheel or do anything like that, but we did do some research on how it's applied, what the terms are, and things of that nature. I want to be very clear, these are for required improvements already. This will be coming from an adopted plan that you have already adopted. These aren't new conditions or improvements that we have created. They're coming from a basis of a plan that's already been adopted. And you see there, you adopted the pedestrian plan in February of 2012. The greenways and bikeways plan was September of 17. So that's where the bulk of these improvements or fees will be paid in lieu of for these improvements to be built. It is an option of the city. It's not going to be on every project, so it's only when it's warranted, and I'm going to get to that in the next slide. And the red is the actual text, but again, I want to just focus on some of these items because it became clearer as we walked through it at P and Z. Again, it's just for required improvements. They are already going to be installed with the development. But if there is a project that's planned in the next five years, and this is again a collection of looking at other communities, that there's something funded at the state level, which will primarily be the project that's funded in five years, but it also can be a city project, anything else that we know of that is adopted and funded that's going to come through in the next five-year period, we would look at using this option. Again, it's going to be something that's an option to the city, but it's something that's offered to where it's not a sidewalk, greenway, or bikeway that's installed, and again, we know that something is coming through there. The reason we picked the five years because, as you know, being on Transportation Advisory Committee with the NPO, that's how the state funds their projects now. They basically commit, as much as they can commit, that first five-year period to what projects will be funded. And they use the word committed in their process, so that's why we use the five years. For the amount, it will be an estimate that's determined by the City Engineering Department, the full amount of that cost, including design and installation at the time. It would be put into a restricted fund. This was added for more clarity. It can only be spent on the project it was intended for. So it's a restricted fund. It's not in the general fund. It goes into a restricted fund for that use only. Then we also had some discussion about what's on the site. There was concern about taking these funds and spending them across the city or 10 blocks away, you know? So we tried to be a little bit clearer about the improvements will be on the site or in the street right away in the vicinity of the site, and as continuous extension or augmentation of the infrastructure network represented by the site requirement of which is collected. Again, meaning it's supposed to be in that area. We want to be very clear that that is our focus.
Now, that wouldn't stop the city. If it was site-specific, but 300 yards away was another connection, and the city wanted to go in between and improve that so that it would be contiguous. We could still do that, but their monies would be used for that site.
Right. I mean, that's our intent is to use it at that site as close as possible. The text was, that was the best attempt that we could do to word that, if you will. So our focus is, again, it's already required. It's used when we know of a plan or a project that's going to be funded in the next five years. We're given high probability that that's the case, and it will be in a restricted fund, and it will go contiguous to the site, if you will. But we added some more text there as far as the area, so it's not intended to be spent away from the area that is paid for.
And what's the timing on collecting the fees?
The TRC process will be a good point of that. We'll certainly want to work with finance to see exactly when. We can discuss when we will collect that, but it'll be part of a requirement of development if we're going to go to a fee in lieu.
And just to clarify, the fee is collected based on a five-year plan of what's projected to be built?
What we know is if there's a project coming, intersection-wide and a roadway-wide, NC62, for example, we know that project's funded, it's coming, so if something were to come along that corridor and this was approved, we'd be able to use that tool. It's just a tool that allows us to do that.
If for some reason that project did not happen, what happens to those funds?
We talked about that as well. We did not see any mechanism elsewhere that would allow, you know, we talked about a refund or a credit and things like that. That would be applied in the same process. It would be for that area to be built. So, I mean, it wouldn't be a, just because the state project wasn't built for some reason or we changed our project, we still have those monies in a restricted fund that are for that project. In the way I understand it, that when we receive those funds, we'll have a name, terminology for that, so we know where the money came from. That was also another question.
It'd be like a journal description for what that is.
I believe so.
It'll be in a restricted fund balance.
Any other questions from council? All right.
Do we have a separate vote on that, or no, all together?
David.
Okay, so that's the fee in lieu amendment. The other item I want to be clear about, the second item, it has at the bottom of your page, the 33.8 amendment. Currently, only the pedestrian plan is recognized in our subdivision regulations. This is great for our pedestrian plan. It allows us to require our sidewalks as part of development. The greenway and bikeway plan that was adopted in 2017 is not recognized in our subdivision ordinance. So currently, we are able to get those improvements only through conditional rezonings or developer agreement. They just want to offer that as part of the development. So there's no real regulation or orders to require construction of our greenway and bikeway plan. What's being requested of you is that we would simply insert, as we do now, we have a pedestrian plan, that we would insert the greenway and bikeway plan to recognize that in our subdivision ordinance. And that means that as part of development, not only will we be getting easements or right-of-ways, they would actually be building, constructing our greenway and bikeway plan, just as they are for the pedestrian plan. Now, we've gone through some kickback on our sidewalk plan and process like that, so I would imagine we would get some on the greenway and bikeway, but it's a huge tool for implementation. Otherwise, we're just getting it hit or miss through rezonings or a developer likes that to be part of this project. So we don't really have a consistent way to implement the greenway and bikeway plan, and that's why this one was brought forward.
Any questions regarding that? All right. Thank you, Mr. Nunn.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak regarding this ordinance change, from this side of the room. Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, public hearing has been closed. Do I hear a motion regarding this agenda item?
I'll make a motion that we adopt this particular zoning amendment text as laid out in the agenda before us.
Yes, yes. Do you mind adding a statement of consistency?
It does, and maybe it's consistency, yes. We approve this request based upon consistency with the comprehensive plan, this action's reasonable in public interest, and this amendment is compatible with existing land use in the area.
All right. Any questions regarding the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Item five on our agenda, public hearing has been set to consider amending City Burlington zoning ordinance text, Sections 32.10, as it pertains to outdoor storage, display, or sales of new or used tires. At this time, we recognize Director of Planning and Community Development, Amy Nelson.
Thank you. This is another city request for a text amendment. It was decided to amend our recently adopted ordinance that deals with the outdoor storage and display of tires to allow tire businesses some flexibility with the screening requirements. Business owners will be able with this to utilize a continuous opaque vegetative barrier of non-deciduous plants, evergreen trees or shrubs that are a minimum of six feet in height when they are planted, so that we will continue with that screening rather than letting them grow to that height. We want it to be that height already. When this was presented to the commission, no one from the public spoke in opposition. Staff recommends the amendment, and the commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the text amendment request.
Any questions from council? Thank you. This is a public hearing. If anyone on this side of the room would like to speak regarding this ordinance change. Anyone on this side of the room? Do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. Do I hear a motion regarding this?
I'd make a motion that we adopt the amendment to the zoning ordinance text that's discussed, and that we approve this request based upon consistency with the comprehensive plan, that this action is reasonable and in public interest, and that the amendment is compatible with the existing land uses in the area.
Any questions regarding the motion to approve? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion is passed. That completes our regular agenda. This moves us to public comment period. Is Jim Johnson still here?
No.
All right. Kaden, did you want to speak? You have five minutes to speak. If you could state your name and address again.
I can make it real quick. Yeah, my name is spelled K-A-D-I-N, Kaden Jones, 1,005 North Main Street, Burlington, North Carolina. So me and my wife bought a house a while back, a cheap home around $60,000. We put a lot of money into improvements, put stone on the garage, rebuilt it, the front. We're really proud of our purchase. We bought below our means because of lessons from the previous financial disaster that we all faced. One thing that we would love to see with Burlington is, and it's obvious by the effort that the council has put into greenways and parkways, the interest in developing those things that attract individuals into a place where they can work and play. One of the things that I would like to bring to the attention of the council is the north side of town, North Main Street. There's a few things on that side. It's quote-unquote "the seedy side of town," but I think it has a lot of potential to be something a lot better. I've heard from older residents in the past that the city on that side was actually quite a nice area. In fact, I think we have some historic districts. I think we live in one, the Beverly Hills Historic District. I feel like there's a few things, especially when it comes to the roadways, that contribute to the type of neighborhood that is developing over there. We've had some neighbors recently broken into, unfortunately, and there are some elements, specifically Ireland Street in North Main there. We have prostitutes that walk the street. I have some convenience stores that are lit up like a Christmas tree 24 hours a night. Basically, I'm just bringing to the attention some of the issues over there. One thing that I thought would be interesting for the council to consider, especially with the interest in the walkways, the bike lanes, and the other amenities to our roadways, is North Main Street, if you compare it to South Main Street on the other side of town, there's been bike lanes put in on that side, especially down by the cemetery, going towards the parks, a beautiful area. I do know that even though our side of town isn't quite as nice as that side of town, I do notice a lot of individuals that actually use bikes to commute to downtown as well as to stores. Many, many people use bikes down there. It would be nice to have bike lanes. Also, North Main doesn't have parking on it, which means it's a four-lane road. It's kind of overbuilt for our neighborhood. It invites a lot of people with fast motorbikes and fast cars one or two in the morning. And I remember being 18 years old. If I had a fast vehicle, I would be on that street, too, and I would make advantage of the four lanes that are there. So I was thinking maybe a little bit of attention put onto that side of town to maybe think of whether Main Street, Meben, or Church Street could be adjusted a little bit. We love the sidewalks. Thank you so much for putting them there years ago, but maybe some bike lanes and maybe restricting it down to maybe two lanes instead of four lanes would be very nice for the council to consider. One little note I'd like to make is if you go closer to Webb Avenue, you'll notice that there's a lot of warehouses, there's a church there. For some reason, that area is two-lane, but then when it goes to residential, it opens back up to four-lane. It doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. I feel like the only individuals that would take advantage of that are people who are trying to make a quick cut-through in order to avoid traffic on Meben as well as Church Street. I know not everybody can get what they want. It's obvious from the first 30 minutes of this council meeting, but if you could take a look at it, I'd appreciate it. If there's anything I can do, I talked to Jessica earlier, so maybe I'll get up with her and maybe formulate a more concrete plan, but this is just basically to alert the council of some changes. I know our side of town, I know I'm nearing five minutes, our side of town, a lot of the residents aren't quite as active in public hearings as maybe myself. Actually, I'm new at this, so forgive me for my goof earlier.
No worries. Pretty good for your first job.
Thank you. So it would be an interest on my part to maybe activate some of these residents on that side of the town, maybe do some footwork, write, get some petitions put together. There's a lot of things that we can do, and hopefully with Jessica, we can formulate, like I said, a more concrete plan. Thank you for your patience in listening to me.
Thank you, Kaden. And if you could reach out and chat with Mr. Beal here after the meeting, I think he would be happy to work with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And there are some other people in your neighborhood who are interested in the same kinds of things, so I think if you explore that, and we can give you some names of people that we know are very active and want to improve that area.
Thank you for your passion for the community. That concludes our public comment period. At this time, we have city manager comments.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. And I'll just share a word as well, Kaden, we'll make sure and get you the link, but we have an adopted, Mr. Nunn made reference to it, we have we have an adopted, Mr. Nunn made reference to it, we have an adopted bikeways and greenways plan. It was adopted in September of 2017, and you'll see some of the things we're talking about, actually, in that plan. It's a wonderfully done plan. It's very comprehensive. It looks across the whole city, and you'll see, as you take a look at that, that puts together a whole network. So we can get you a hard copy of that as well. Very quick mic there. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm going to introduce one of our newest members of our leadership team, Evan Brown. Evan, if you'll stand up and take a spot here. Evan Brown is our new sanitation superintendent, working for the city of Burlington. He comes to us from city of Raleigh, where he's worked in the solid waste management team there in Raleigh, has served a couple different roles, including assistant operations superintendent. We're very fortunate to have him joining our team. He's also spent some time in the private sector, worked at waste management on the commercial side. Before that, he had an interesting career path, and you may, you'll get this after I tell you this, by noticing his jacket size, that he worked five years in the stringing conditioning field and worked here at Elon University, he's worked at North Carolina Central and Duke University, so we're looking forward to him bringing the coaching mindset and the coaching approach from what he's learned in that part of his career to our team and sort of building the team that we have in sanitation. Evan has his master's degree from North Carolina Central, has a bachelor's degree from Catawba, and also brings to us one of the important certifications in the solid waste industry, SWAN certification. He's a native of Hillsborough, so he grew up not too far from us and now resides in Hurdle Mills, and we're thrilled to have him on our team and wanted to give you a chance to meet him in person and see if he wanted to share any opening words with us.
Right. So I got the pleasure of meeting most of you all at the last meeting that I was at. So I just look forward to helping out the community and working with you all and pleasing the citizens and getting my team to get the trash up as safe as possible, so that's pretty much it.
Welcome aboard.
They did a great job getting to that, too.
Right. Appreciate it.
So we told Evan there's no pressure on him, but his department is the only department that goes by and touches every home every week, but there's no pressure.
Right.
Welcome, Evan.
Thank you. Beside him both. Thank you.
As they tell all very politicians when they get elected, you've got to make sure the traffic gets picked up. So I'm glad to have good folks in charge of this.
Yeah, I got you.
Next on our agenda is a board and commission report from our PTAC. At this time, we recognize Mike Nunn.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Just an update from our commission meeting. You have a memo in your package to this as well. On August 14th, the PTAC unanimously recommended that we recommend, PTAC recommend, a fair free day for the November election, the general election, as you did in November of 2017. The addition to this recommendation this time was also that if you would want to consider continuing that on every general election in November, that would be fine, but that was the recommendation as well, just an administrative process, but certainly something we could do each year if you like to do that as well. So that would be for the general elections in November to be a fair free day for link transit. I believe that's going to be dropped over meeting.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. Next on our agenda, we have a number of reports. First is the Unified Development Ordinance presentation for Module Two. This time, we recognize our folks from Code Right Planners, and I'll call on Chad Meadows.
I'm Chad Meadows with Code Right Planners. We are here today to overview Module Two for you, and with me is TC Morpheus from the Bro Law Firm. I'll allow him to introduce himself.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me be here this evening with Chad. Our law firm focuses on local government land use work, so that is obviously why we're here. Chad will be doing all the talking, but I am here if you have any questions that need a lawyer and not a planner to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, TC. Because Mr. Ward has nothing better to do, I thought we'd spend the next hour and a half talking about Module Two. Obviously, I'm kidding.
He's a good friend.
We will try to get through this material as quickly as possible. I know you guys have had a busy agenda, so we'll move quickly through this. Again, we're here to talk about Module Two. This is the second in the series of three modules. We're about two-thirds of the way done with the drafting. The last time we met with you was on Module One, the administration module. That was back in February of this year. So let me go ahead and overview this project for you. Series of project goals, there's six of them. These were identified in the code assessment, which we presented to you back in 2016. Basically, the code assessment is the blueprint or the roadmap for the project. It's been the guidance for us as we've drafted and will continue to be the guidance for us as we finalize the document in Module Three. It sets out topics, organizations, and issues for us to address. Module Two really focuses on modernizing the district's uses and, to a somewhat lesser extent, revitalizing downtown, so that's really the focus of the material in Module Two. A lot of the objectives for the UDO project were taken from your comprehensive plan. Things like providing a balance of land uses to diversify the tax base, revitalizing downtown, revitalizing neighborhoods, increasing connectivity and transportation choices, promoting economic development, protecting environmental resources, more housing options, and increasing quality of life. Obviously, you guys are already making progress on a lot of those things, as evidenced by the text amendments that you're moving through now. The new UDO hopes to further those goals. The UDO structure, there are 10 chapters in the UDO. The four chapters in gold on your screen, chapters three, four, eight, and nine comprise Module Two. You know, we've really worked hard to consolidate and reorganize your development regulations. Right now, your current code has 30-plus sections. We've dropped it down to 10, and we've integrated a variety of material from the city code, things like your subdivision provisions, your flood damage prevention provisions, stormwater repair and buffer, et cetera, trying to bring all the planning and development-related provisions into one place, make it a little bit easier to use. Document has a new look and feel. We've supplemented it with a lot of summary tables, illustrations, flow charts, and the digital version has a lot of capabilities like searchable text and hyperlinks, et cetera. So we really think it's a development code for the modern age. So I'd like to talk a little bit about each of the chapters in Module Two, starting with Chapter Three, the zoning districts. There's basically 18 sections. They address the zoning map generally, a series of generalized purpose and intent statements for the types of zoning districts that are out there, a series of 13 sections devoted to each of the general or base zoning districts in the document. There's also a section on the four conditional districts, a section on the two planned development districts, and a section on the overlay districts. Let's talk about the key changes between what you have on the books today and how this draft document is structured. First and foremost, we've consolidated all of the zoning-related material. I've lost one already. We've consolidated all of the zoning material into one chapter so that it's all in one place. We've tried to translate and consolidate the districts where we could, down from 24 to 19. 13 general, four conditional, and two planned development. There's a series of new density and dimensional standards by use type. You'll see an example of that in a moment. Comprehensive set of purpose and intent statements, I already mentioned, a new graphically-driven layout, so we're trying to supplement the district standards with more imagery for preferred kinds of development, how subdivisions would be preferred to look, et cetera. We've also tried to focus on modern, quote unquote "modern" development configuration. This means, you know, more mixed-use development, so we're trying to blur the lines between use segregation. This is residential, this is commercial. We're trying to move away from that and towards use mixing by right, which is pretty typical with what modern development regulations are doing. We're also trying to encourage more housing choice, new things like live-work units, pocket neighborhoods, new forms of commerce, coworking, business incubator, makerspace, that kind of stuff, and increased focus on development quality, aesthetics, pedestrian orientation, and compatibility protection, right? One of the main premises is to take better advantage of the infrastructure investments that we've already made by encouraging infill. It's important for us to focus on compatibility so that the infill that comes in doesn't negatively impact the development that is already in place. Okay? Few more key changes for you. You may recall, the last time we were around, we talked a little bit about the conditional rezoning process. We've established a series of provisions that are limited in terms of their ability to be waived through the conditional zoning process. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. Two new planned development districts, one for the downtown, one for areas outside the downtown. A new parks and conservation district, a new district framework for gateway corridor overlays, the focal corridors for the community, Maple, Huffman Mill, et cetera. And there are some efforts for planning on some of these corridors, you know, underway right now. Flood prevention provisions are now included as an overlay, and we've attempted to rewrite many of the other overlay provisions for greater clarity. This table is a summary of the general or base districts. I'm not going to spend a lot of time talking about this. I just want to let you know that we've organized the districts into four groups, residential, business, special, and conditional. We've adopted, nor suggesting, some new abbreviations that are a little bit more intuitive than what you have on the current books. The eight residential districts are going to four. We're keeping the residential manufactured home. The code assessment talked about that as an overlay, but we're suggesting that retain, be retained as a base district. One area that is a little bit different, that we have not yet talked about with you, is not in the code assessment and is something that we're going to have to deal with next time we come back before you, is the establishment of a medium industrial district. After working with your economic development folks, it was felt that the two flavors of industrial district that we have on the books today, light or heavy, were, they lacked a subtlety. They lacked the ability to accommodate the kinds of new industrial uses that we're seeing that are more intense than what you might find in a light industrial district, but yet don't have the kinds of heavy impact, you know, smoke, odor, dust, noise, kinds of things that you would typically find in a heavy industrial district. So there's a call to introduce a new medium industrial that's got a greater development intensity than the light, but doesn't allow the big, heavy, quote unquote "dirty" kinds of industrial uses. So that's coming. We had those discussions after this material was drafted, so we're going to have to talk about that with you as part of Module Three. New mixed-use general district. Your current regulations handle mixed use through conditional districts. We're suggesting that we establish a base general mixed-use district that makes it a little bit easier to establish that, and then the two planned development districts. This is an example of the three-page layout that I mentioned to you. All of the zoning, base zoning districts in the ordinance will include a series of three-page layout like what you see here, some photographs of development examples, some photographs and schematics of subdivision lotting that would be preferred in the district, a set of dimensional standards organized by use type. You see that there's four, there's actually one column off the screen, five different columns of use types on the very first page. And then finally, these axonometric three-dimensional diagrams that have, that are keyed back to the black circles that are shown in the dimensional standards. So the idea behind this is to show how buildings relate to one another, how they relate to their lot lines, and how they relate to the street for each district. The idea is to give the reader a little bit more sense about what we mean when we talk about the purpose and intent statements and the dimensional standards. I mentioned that we are suggesting some limitations on the conditional zoning districts. We're carrying forward the four conditional zoning districts that you have today, right? Residential, business, industrial, et cetera. Those are being carried forward. Mixed use is now a general district. These on the screen are some of the limitations that are suggested for consideration as we move forward with the project. And again, what I mean by limitations are, these are things that we would suggest an applicant not be allowed to modify as part of an application for a conditional rezoning, things that make sense, frankly, like the open space set aside in greenway regulations that you guys are already working so hard on, public infrastructure. We don't want to see those kinds of standards reduced. Certainly, the design standards, the conditional use, conditional zoning process in the past has been used to deviate from the design standards, and that's been indicated as a problem. Finally, the overlay district standards. These are pretty important standards, like floodway, watershed, riparian buffer, airport. You don't want to allow deviations from those. Those things are there for a reason. So we're suggesting that this is the list of things that would be limited through the conditional rezoning process. This is a new concept for you guys. You may recall, during the last meeting, we had a lot of discussion about this, and it was decided that we needed an alternative. We want to retain some of the flexibility that is given, that's been granted through the conditional rezoning process, and we've made the suggestion that be the planned development district. Okay? So the planned development district is like a conditional rezoning, but it allows maximum flexibility. Okay? There are a few limitations that we're seeking to include, things like limit, you can't waive or reduce flood hazard standards, stormwater standards, signage provisions, but most everything else is open for discussion and negotiation. The planned development requires a detailed master plan and a statement of terms and conditions that sets out the range of allowable uses, the conversion schedule, if you have one, phasing, and how public infrastructure is going to be provided. Okay? The basic element, or the basic thing to think about with the planned development district is, it's an opportunity for an applicant to engage with the community about a flexible, negotiated development with the underlying expectation that the development that results from that process is of high quality, a quality that would exceed the level of quality that would otherwise result from a strict application of the standards. So that the applicant wins through flexibility, the city wins through a higher quality of development. Okay? So that's the base expectation of the planned development process. Now, one of the things that's a little bit different from the code assessment is how we handle downtown. Downtown revitalization is vital to this project, and we spent a lot of time working with your staff, working with folks who own property in the downtown, trying to come up with an approach that was going to be helpful and not be obstructive to the kind of redevelopment that we're looking for in the downtown district. We settled on a planned development process or a planned development district to give us the maximum flexibility that we need to encourage the kind of redevelopment that we're looking for in the downtown, and that means buildings close up to the street, a revitalized streetscape, mixed use, greater focus on pedestrians. That sort of development style is what we're looking for in the downtown, the area inside the red boundary on your map. Now, to maintain maximum flexibility, what we're suggesting is that the planned development process for the downtown area be supplemented with 12 principles, okay? 12 principles that all the development needs to explain how it will comply with and further those principles, and those include things like active ground floor uses, mixed uses, buildings close to the sidewalk, parking that's not close to the sidewalk, rear alleys, a focus on the public realm, public gathering areas and pedestrian scale, enclosing the street with building walls to create that sense of enclosure that pedestrians enjoy. So those kinds of principles are embedded within the district regulation, and it's up to the applicant to show how they further the principles inside the document. We'll supplement those with photographs as we move through the process so that it's clear what we're looking for and what we're not looking for. It is possible that the TRC could, during its review of the master plan that's associated with any development in a planned development district, hold a special meeting to focus solely on the design principles. So we've embedded that piece into the process to allow a little bit of extra scrutiny through the review process so that they can give you the input that you need when you're making a determination about an approval, a decision on a PDD request. Now, there is one topic that we need some guidance from you on, that we need for you guys to consider going forward, and this is it. On the screen is a zoning map. You see the red boundary. You see that there is a wide variety of residential zoning district classification within that red boundary. The issue for consideration is whether or not the city will consider approving a rezoning application inside that red boundary to a district other than PDD. We would suggest that only those applications trying to establish the planned development district inside the red boundary be approved, okay? So that you are not in a position where somebody who might own O and I land or who might own B2 land cannot come in and make a request to establish a new zoning district that's not PDD and make investment based on that, all right, that might be contrary to the principles that you're trying to establish within, inside this boundary.
Didn't we talk about the boundary and sort of set it at one of our work sessions?
We absolutely did. This is the boundary that--
That's what we agreed on.
Mm-hmm. That's right. This was actually a little bit bigger than what we had originally proposed, and we decided we wanted to expand it a little bit. We feel like the PDD approach gives us the maximum flexibility while still protecting the principles, and the real question at hand right now is, over the long term, do we want to consider rezoning requests to something other than the PDD inside that red boundary? You could do that, and that would be okay, but it might delay the ultimate vision of establishing this vibrant pedestrian-oriented downtown hub for you. So that's a decision point for you to consider. I will tell you that the advisory committee, when we spoke with them about this, supported the notion of limiting rezonings, or limiting rezoning approvals-- the notion of limiting rezonings or limiting rezoning approvals. We're not limiting applications. Anybody can submit any application at any time, and that's okay, but that we, that we consider approving only those applications that seek to establish the PDD inside that round, that red boundary. Okay? One last thing I want to mention to you is that you have a lot of existing buildings in this area, and we do not want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I hate that expression, but I'll use it anyway. And so to avoid that, what we are suggesting is that if you are doing redevelopment under the PDD zoning district designation in this area, that the principles only be applied to the portions of the building that you are adding or that you are having major renovation on. So if you've got an existing building, we're not going to make you tear it down. We're not going to make you go in and do something to it that's, you know, inconsistent with that existing building. If you're going to do an addition, or if you're going to have some major exterior renovation, we would want those portions of the building to comply with the principles, but only those portions. Okay? So we've really tried to take a fair and balanced approach. We've tried to not be obstructionist and really facilitate the kind of development that we're looking for in this area. One last thing, obviously, the planned development district for downtown is very flexible. Okay? A lot of the regulations that might apply somewhere else in town don't apply here. Okay? The only caveat is that you need to meet those principles. The advisory committee's feedback on the Chapter Three zoning district piece is as follows. We had continued concern about the R15, R12, R9 consolidation. You guys may recall, when we talked about this with the code assessment, concern was mentioned by this body. And staff went back and did some extra research on these areas that are currently zoned R15 or R12, that are vacant, and the possibility that the consolidation that we're proposing would create a potential for incompatible development in those established residential neighborhoods. And after the research, we found that really this wasn't a major problem, that we weren't looking at a wide possibility or a wide potential of existing neighborhoods facing some kind of incredible densification through this consolidation that's being suggested. So we really feel like that issue has been solved. The advisory committee just mentioned that this is still a concern for them. So I will, I will mention that to you. One suggestion that was made that we could certainly consider if you wanted us to is consider some additional screening requirements via landscaping from existing R15, R12 parcels for new development inside the MDR district, which is a possibility that might help address any compatibility concerns that come up. Okay? There were some questions about public-provided parking in downtown. Certainly, the PDD district, the planned development downtown district, will have no parking requirements. Your B3 district has no parking requirements. And that's done as a means of facilitating development. Now, this city may decide that at some point in the future, you want to get into the business of assisting with a provision of parking. That's not part of the UDO, and we're not suggesting that it's time for you to make that decision now, but this did come up as an issue, and certainly, you know, successful downtown communities are addressing that issue, and the public, the public sector is getting involved in providing parking or providing funding or having some sort of partnership with individual developers to address parking needs. So that's something that's coming. As you guys begin to revitalize your downtown, this is a topic that you're going to need to begin to address and deal with. And I mentioned the narrowing, the rezoning options within the PDD to just the PDD area. Okay? Questions?
The feedback you requested regarding the downtown PDD, is that something you were hoping to get tonight?
No, we don't need it tonight. If that's something that you guys would like to ruminate on and work with staff, we have, we have some time. You know, we're, we're still drafting the document, and it's, you know, that, that's an easy shift for us to make if, for some reason, you guys decide you want to go one way or another. We can handle, we can handle that as we continue the drafting process.
Any questions from council regarding that request or any feedback that members want to get?
Feedback on that? I mean, could we establish a date? We need to provide our feedback so that we can put some finality to it.
January of 2019.
I think more like- Yeah. I mean, I'd hate for it to just be open-ended and it get off of our agenda.
Yeah, I agree. I think the sooner the better, because we're going to be focusing on Module Three very shortly.
That's right.
So if we could pick November, December, that would be great. And I'm assuming there were any feedback on this, on this section?
Yeah, November. November work session.
Okay. Great, great.
So we'll have a discussion at the November work session, and then wrap it up. Get forwarded to Chad.
Very good, very good. If you need additional information for that, just let me know. Okay, let's talk about Chapter Four. That's the use standards chapter. Basically consolidates all the provisions related to use. We recognize three different kinds of use: principal, accessory, and temporary. Okay? Some key changes. Like the districts, we've consolidated all the provisions into a single chapter. We've established a new use classification structure that allows us to address unlisted uses and quickly classify those. That's stemming from a court of appeals case that was approved a few years ago that we are now having to deal with in terms of, we can no longer just say because a use isn't listed, it's prohibited. Your current regulation considers any unlisted use as a permitted use inside your heavy industrial district. We don't think that's a great idea either, because that could bring things to your heavy industrial district that are, you know, very inappropriate for that district. So we would suggest moving away from that and into this use classification structure. We've supplemented the code with a list of prohibited uses, uses that are prohibited throughout the jurisdiction. One of the things that I want to highlight for you is that one of those prohibited uses throughout the jurisdiction is off-premise billboards. So we are suggesting that those be prohibited. That does not address existing billboards. Those are non-conforming. They can remain, and there's a whole series of state law about the kinds of improvements that they can do to those existing non-conforming billboards. So what's out there today stays and can be improved in accordance with state law, but we are suggesting that no new be allowed. So that's something for you to consider. That's change for y'all to ruminate on and let us know what you want to do. There's a handful of other prohibited uses. Outdoor shooting ranges, there's a variety of very heavy industrial kinds of things, tanneries and sizing manufacturer and things that are, you know, probably pretty intensive and the kinds of things you probably wouldn't want to see in your community. So we've added a pretty comprehensive list of those. We've added a list of, of kind of new, modern use types. I highlighted some of them before. Remember the live work and the pocket neighborhood? We've also supplemented your regulations for all of the state changes that have happened with respect to wireless telecommunications. We're now seeing 5G deployment throughout the state, and there's a variety of state law about the 5G system. These draft regulations are consistent with that. We've also got provisions for microbreweries and business incubators and coworking and event spaces, large-format retail, research and development, power generation uses, and a handful of others. So we really are trying to recognize these kinds of modern uses that are there. Comprehensive set of general standards applicable to the accessory uses and a set of temporary use provisions. So those are your key changes. This is what your new use table looks like. With one caveat, there are a variety of things included on this table in very small type. Those are your current regulations. They are provided solely for the sake of comparison. When you adopt the code, those things in small text will come out. They're simply there for the sake of comparison today. Okay? Because we found that that makes it a little bit easier. You have a similar table for accessory uses. Accessory uses are things that are incidental to a principal use, and there are some general kinds of accessory standards, incidental location, dimensional requirements, et cetera, along with some additional standards for common, quote-unquote, common accessory uses, things like accessory dwelling units, drive-throughs, family healthcare structures, solar energy systems, outdoor storage, that sort of thing. So you'll see some provisions in there for, for those. Also, a series of temporary use standards for things like food trucks, itinerary merchants, portable storage containers, temporary dwellings, et cetera. So with really a comprehensive approach to principal, accessory, and temporary use. There were some questions about how we're defining hazardous uses. Remember, I said there's a list of prohibited uses that are prohibited throughout the jurisdiction. There was a very good question about what a hazardous facility might be or what hazardous waste might be, so we talked about the definition of that, to be sure that we weren't being overly broad in terms of our prohibition of, quote, hazardous. There was also a question about tiny homes. Tiny homes are not allowed by the state building code, so we unfortunately are not able to accommodate those right now. So when state law changes, we'll be the first to advocate for that, for that kind of thing, but at this point, you're not in a position to allow those. Any questions on Chapter Four? Very quickly, we'll talk about the other two chapters. You have already seen this chapter, measurement and definitions. This, this is the rules of language construction. What does shall mean? What does may mean? How do we calculate time? That sort of thing. There's also a table of abbreviations and some rules of measurement, and then finally the definitions. We've brought all of this stuff together, tried to make it easier to follow. The rules of measurement are defined and illustrated, so how you determine setbacks is illustrated now. It sounds simple, but it's not. Imagine a pie-shaped lot, which is the, you know, what's the front, front yard on a pie-shaped lot? What's the rear yard? So those kinds of questions that come up on a day-to-day basis are set out in the rules of measurement. There's a glossary of abbreviations, and we've really consolidated your definition into a single location and dealt with some of the inconsistencies that exist because you've got them spread out through your city code. Subdivision has its regulations, flood has its, riparian has its, and sometimes some of the same terms have different definitions across the documents. So we've tried to consolidate those and address any inconsistencies. Okay? This is an example of what a rules of measurement section should look like. Summary tables, illustrations, definitions, et cetera. Should be something that's easy to follow, and a reader should understand exactly how the city is applying these standards. And this is what yours will look like, though your illustrations will be for Burlington in your color scheme. Nonconformities. These are things that exist today or exist at the time that the code is adopted, but that do not comply with the code provisions, whether that's a use, or a setback, or a lot configuration, or a sign, or a site. Okay? You have some nonconforming provisions in place today. Some of the key changes between what we, what you have today and what we're suggesting. Clarification that the, the burden of proof of an existing lawful nonconformity is on the applicant, so they need to show that their nonconforming condition was lawfully established. Clarification about continued maintenance. Distinction in the standards between uses lots and structures. The ability to upgrade certain nonconformities, like mobile homes, to a newer grade of mobile home, or to a manufactured home, or to a modular home. Increased clarity about how to replace a nonconforming use or structure after casualty damage. You know, if 50% or more of the structure's damaged, it needs to be brought into full compliance. If it's less than 50%, then it can be brought back to its prior state, prior to the, to the casualty. We've removed the amortization periods. The reason we've removed them is they're quite old. They're several decades old, and if you haven't gotten to those screening and signing by now, you're probably not going to get to it, so we're suggesting that that be removed. There's some new standards for removal of nonconforming signage. If you've got a use out there that has a sign that doesn't conform with the regulation and that use stops, then we're suggesting that that nonconforming signage that's out in front be removed. Okay? And the idea behind that is to slowly bring existing signage that doesn't conform into conformity with the regulations. It will take some time, but this is a forward-looking stance that's not in your current regulations.
Would that take place between tenants of a leased facility?
Not necessarily. It's only when a use changes, if an existing use is, ceases or is abandoned.
Would we require, obviously, the owner of the facility to do that, or something?
Yes, we would, we would require the, the, the landowner to take responsibility for removal of that sign.
Just to add to that, well, the landowner would have responsibility. We don't really have a say if they have something in their lease provision between a tenant, so it might ultimately fall to the tenant, but as to the city and zoning, it'd be on the owner.
One of the things you might see in the future as a means of facilitating this and speeding it up is that you might find the city participating in some way in the, in sort of assisting a landowner in removal of a nonconforming sign. So that's not part of the UDO, and it's something that you might want to consider in your discussions going forward, but the idea is win-win. The city wins by removing the nonconforming signage. The landowner wins because they're not faced with a, a large expenditure. No comments from the advisory committee on either of these chapters. Do you guys have any questions about these chapters?
Any questions from council at nine o'clock at night about definitions?
Let me talk quickly about Module Three. That's the development standards chapter. That will be coming to you, we hope to be in front of you in early January with that material, after we've worked with staff and your advisory committee on this, the kinds of things that this deals with. Parking, landscaping, design standards, signage. That's what you should be looking for in the future. Here are our next steps. We are thinking that we would have the public hearings on the adoption of the full code April or May of 2019. It is our strong desire to accelerate that schedule wherever we can, and so we are working with your staff to try to find ways to, to speed that up so that we're not into June, that we can, we can get this done before June. That is my presentation, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Still nailed it. Keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Our next report is an update on police enforcement initiative, but this time we recognize Police Chief Kev Smiley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for a few moments of your time. If we might, just figuratively in your minds, think about doing about 10 jumping jacks and wake up just for this last burst of activity, we'll round you out and get you out of here pretty quickly. I have five slides, two of which are title slides, so they're going to go quick.
And I would like to introduce Lieutenant Alan Balog with us.
Yeah, absolutely. He's with us. So we're here to talk about gambling and violent crime in Burlington and some of the connections that we have made in those things, and I apologize if this is a graphic photograph, but this is a murder scene that occurred in Burlington. And this was one of the sparks for us to recognize some of the linkages between sweepstakes and fish places and their high volume of cash flow and the propensity for them to be victims, victims of crime. The picture on the right is the suspect in this murder case. It's a fairly maybe iconic picture of a man with two firearms that he's used to kill one man and bludgeon others in the heinous commission of this crime. And for us, we need to stop this, and so our tactic today was to undertake some notice service, and I'm going to let Alan explain how that went. The graphic that's before you now shows violent crime in Burlington as heat maps, so the more red the image, the more violent crime occurs in those places. The, I believe there are dot icons. Those are the locations where we have sweepstakes or fish game locations, and there's a considerable overlap of the two images, and this is dated for an 18-month period. And so when we look at this, this is symbolic of the need to eradicate some of these places based on their connection to violence. We worked with the media today and had a press release, and so there's some stories out, and I was just scanning some of those comments before coming up before you tonight. And interestingly, some of those are comments about, oh, it's just gambling, it's just this, it's not about the money. And for us, I want to be very crystal clear that this is not about those things. This is about violence in Burlington and keeping people safe. That's what our initiative is about. And so after much litigation across the state for a five-year period, we find ourselves in a place where we're able to act, we understand the law, we've worked with other law enforcement agencies to understand tactics that they have used successfully to eliminate and reduce violence in their communities, and that's what we have undertaken today. And so with that, I'll tap to Alan and let him share his knowledge about what goes on and what we did today.
Thank you, Chief. Today was Phase One, and we refer to it as a public notification phase. We want to make sure that it's abundantly clear to the employees, the owners of the businesses, the property owners about what is taking place. And specifically, it's that the gambling statutes are going to become enforced in Burlington starting October 15th of this year. So as a part of the public notifications, we spoke directly with 13 people in person at the businesses today. We mailed 68 notifications by mail. During the collection, during the notification process, the magnitude of the issue became even more clear when we determined that there are over 1,000 internet sweepstakes machines that are operating in- that are operating in Burlington at this moment. There are over 75 fish games tables that are operating in Burlington at this moment. They can each accommodate approximately eight players. So, there's the ability for over 1,600 people in the community to play at one time. We did not have any, we answered a number of questions to make sure that the employees, the owners, were fully informed about what the process for the police will be, and we did not have any issues.
Do you all have any questions for us?
Yeah, I'm going to share mine. Just tell me about a fish game. You do not win a goldfish at the end of the game.
It is essentially a slot machine. So, it's a cash-in, cash-out game that uses a video game instead of perhaps the absolute roulette wheel, but it's a gambling device that people use, and we believe very clearly illegally use, and they're doing so in Burlington. And so, this is the notice to cease and desist and to allow those folks to step gradually over a month period out of what is an illegal activity and come into compliance with state law.
Stand up for a table and shoot fish.
Literally, you push a button, which is a gambling act.
So, from years ago, or several years ago, when we were trying to determine what was legal and what was not?
Correct.
Where have we come from, from that day to now in terms of the technology? Or has the court system helped us in that process?
So, the technology has continued to morph, but we believe that the activities that are undertaken are clearly illegal under North Carolina statutes, and it's our position that we will be enforcing those effective October 15th.
So, what does that mean to the... What does that mean to the elderly person who tends to may go to some of these establishments or as much social as anything else? I'm just showing my naivety again here, but...
I think that's a valid question. I think my answer would be that we have a number of social opportunities in the city of Burlington. Parks and Recreation provides an abundance of activities that are not related to a high-volume cash business that's prone to violence. We have confidential informants who have provided information that there are a number of armed robberies at these places that go unreported, systematically unreported by management because they know the kinds of operations they run, larcenies and other fraudulent activities that go unreported because of the types of activities, and it's completely inappropriate that any of these old people who would like to be involved in social engagements should not be in these places at all. We have a wonderful wealth of opportunities in Burlington for them to participate in, and I would direct them to those.
So, is the goal to close all these places down?
The goal is to protect the public.
But if that takes to close these places...
The function, absolutely, is to eliminate the risk associated with these businesses that are performing in a criminal nature, attracting violent crime to coalesce, and we believe that that is a risk to our public, and we should stop that.
Any other questions from council? Chief, Lieutenant, thank you very much for your presentation. That concludes the formal agenda and moves us to City Council comments. Do I hear any City Council comments?
Mayor, I've got a few, and it actually pertains to the chief's presentation with Lieutenant Balog, but I wanted to reserve them for council comments because they're uniquely mine, doesn't necessarily represent the council, although I think in portion and maybe in whole they will. But I think you guys did a wonderful job putting together the information to educate us on what the situation was. And we went through a series of meetings to be sure we were in tune and well-educated on what the laws were and what our action plan was, and it's a solid plan, and I completely concur with everything they've put together. I was shocked and amazed at some of the data that was presented when it comes to just sheer public safety. I'm not talking about anything other than public safety, and I started doing some research on my own to find out what some other communities had experienced in public safety as well, and it's equivalent. It's equivalent across all communities. And some of the data that the chief presented to us, and he spoke about it tonight, but it's worth repeating, is they're two times more likely to be the location of an armed robbery than another place. That's significant. That's a significant piece. 50% of the crimes are violence, and 2/3 of them include the use of a firearm. That's another significant piece. What does it tell you when the owner of a business does not live in your city, nor oftentimes in your state? What does that tell you? It's not a small business. That's not what this is. This is very disturbing. We all know the situation on April 8th, where we had a homicide. Graphic pictures, but they depict the types of things that our law enforcement are having to experience and deal with, and the community's becoming saturated. There's 33 or over 30, I don't know how many it is now, it was over 30. One of the articles that I pulled up that I was researching with regards to this has a map, and it's got Raleigh, Durham, Hillsborough, Meven Ground, Burlington. And I looked at all the dots of all the locations. We're by far per capita the highest, by far. So, think about this, when it comes to criminal activity, we've got local, maybe misdemeanor criminal activity that might hang around these situations, these areas with large cash influx, and then it becomes over 30 of them. Well, now, it's got a bigger group's attention. It's no longer just misdemeanor, you know, child, petty crimes, petty theft, whatever it is. Now, there's a larger attention on this because there are 30-plus of these. Now, you've got criminals from out of town that are coming in, and this is a serious endeavor. I applaud the chief and the department for their efforts. I for one stand behind them 100%. I think your plan's solid. I think it is very easy to implement and maybe more difficult down the road when the enforcement period starts, but that's okay. We'll cross that bridge when we get to it. But the community should know how serious this is and why we're doing it, and again, I applaud you guys for your work on this.
Thank you, sir.
Certainly, I want to compliment you for reaching out to Greensboro and working with them on this. We can always learn from our neighbors. I appreciate you doing that.
Any other council comments? I do want to mention just a couple things. As Manager Watkins mentioned at the beginning, a big thank you to staff and first responders over the past week regarding our response to Hurricane Florence and their continuing work to help out communities all across North Carolina. I think that shows the strength of our state when our cities can know that they can rely on communities for that support. I do want to mention, we've got an exciting week regarding the Western Electric Facility and the ESTAP program. There's a couple events that I want to extend invitation to the public to participate in. Tomorrow, from 5:00 to 6:00 p.m., over at the Western Electric Plant, we'll be giving out guided tours for folks who have always wanted to see in that facility and help develop their vision for how it gets redeveloped. And then, from 6:00 p.m. to 7:30 p.m., there'll be a public input session also at the Western Electric Facility. There'll be a big tent there that folks can come by and provide feedback. And then, on Friday, the project will conclude, and results will be presented at 6:00 p.m. That team will present their findings over at the ABSS Central Office Auditorium over 1712 Vaughan Road. So, we encourage public participation in this. I think that's a critical part of how we find a good way to redevelop the Western Electric site. And then, I want to just give a brief greetings from our sister city, Gwuchan, South Korea. My wife and I were graciously received by the Mayor, Mayor Kim, and his staff, and they provided some wonderful information about their community. We had an opportunity to tour their traffic center. Gwuchan has one of the most advanced traffic control centers in the world, and they're actually in the process of making some further updates to that. So, we've got a great resource as we improve some, they were talking about fiber optic traffic infrastructure to all of their lights and going up to, they're going to the second or third generation of it. So, they're pioneering the way in traffic control in their community. So, I shared a little about some of the work we're doing with them. They also have a CCTV program that they kicked off in their community, and they've been able to turn that into a 70% crime reduction. So, some awesome resources. Mayor Kim expressed a desire to do a staff exchange program to help the cities learn from each other, and so we hope to explore it.
Nolan, what was your first job when you came to the city?
Traffic Systems Manager, working on our car scene.
I think he just signed himself up. How's your career?
Pretty rough.
They were gracious enough to have translators available for us during all the tours, and we appreciate that. Mayor Kim hopes to visit our city this January with the Korean Exchange Students, and he and his staff look forward to continuing to support Korean Exchange students coming to our community. It was a wonderful opportunity, and I want to reiterate my next point as mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Donations can be accepted for Hurricane Florence victims from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. at Fire Station 1. Folks can drop those off. Any other council comments?
Lots of bleach.
Lots of bleach. All right. Do I hear a motion to adjourn? All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? City Council is adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone.